Good evening. Welcome to the August 18th, 2025 Greensboro Planning and Zoning Meeting. My name is Catherine Magid.
Recording in progress.
My name is Catherine Magid, and I am Chair of the Commission. If the other Commissioners would introduce themselves, starting from the right. Betty Turner.
Keith Peterson.
Sandra O'Connor.
Mary Skeens.
Erica Glass.
Paul Gilmour Senior.
Stephen Nichols.
And Commissioner Downing is on the way, but we're going to begin. Members of the Commission are appointed by City Council and serve without pay. The Commission reviews all original zoning and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each Commissioner normally visits each site prior to this meeting. All Commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. When speaking here tonight, please direct all questions and comments to the zoning commission only. The Chair or Commissioners will ask the staff or Attorney to comment on the question. This meeting is being conducted in person and online and is being recorded televised on Greensboro Television Network, GTN, and the telecast is being closed captioned for the hearing impaired. When a case is called that you are interested in, people wishing to speak by Zoom will need to raise the hand function under the reaction button to be notified, noticed, and called upon. Will you please look now to find that? If anyone participating online needs help with Zoom during this meeting, People wishing to speak in person will need to come to the podium, and when you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record. The procedure used at this public hearing is as followed. Planning staff presents background information and makes a recommendation. The applicant will present a short survey of how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Any Commission member may ask questions once the presenter has completed their presentation. The applicant and other people in favor of the request share 10 minutes of speaking time. Those in opposition to the request share 10 minutes of speaking time. Then the rebuttal. Those in favor share five minutes of speaking time. Those in opposition share five minutes of rebuttal time. In an effort to run this meeting more efficiently, the Planning and Zoning Commission may reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which no opposition has been expressed to the Planning Department and the Commission members do not feel necessitates a discussion will be moved to the top of the agenda and will become the expedited agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation for those cases, and the applicant will have up to two minutes to address the Commission. If they desire to provide any information they want the Commission to know. After our deliberation, all approved ordinances receiving six or more favorable or denied votes will constitute a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. An annexed ordinance receiving six or more votes will be favorably recommended and subject to a public hearing by City Council. All ordinances receiving less than six votes will be subject to a public hearing by the City Council. Okay, first, the acknowledgement that Mr. Downing is on his way. Oh, here he is. Welcome, Mr. Downing. Now we need the approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the July minutes.
So moved, subject to one little edit.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
And the edit is, on the facing page where we took the recess, top of the page, there's a reference to a comment that I made where I'm referred to as Ms. Nichols. Now, I'm totally comfortable with my gender identity, but I would request that that be corrected. Subject to that correction, I move that the minutes be approved.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. Now we need some insights from our City Attorney.
Good evening, Chair Magid. Good evening, everyone. Much of the Planning and Zoning Commission's work this evening will relate to the consideration of rezoning applications. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance that when the Commission considers these applications, its determinations are based on the land uses that are allowed under the district, the zoning district that's put forth in the application, as well as any conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. Now, land use impacts on public infrastructure are relevant in rezoning matters, and it's important to know that the Commission is not here to determine all details of a development. That involves staff input and evaluation that goes beyond the scope of the Commission's work. If a rezoning would generate a certain amount of traffic flow, the Commissioners will have been provided with a summary traffic impact study. Meanwhile, many site-specific development features, such as the means of stormwater management, are evaluated through the Technical Review Committee rather than in this forum. Lastly, there are concerns that are not related to land use that would not be germane to the Commission's consideration of rezoning applications. For example, generalized concerns about crime rates and questions of who may own or live at or use the subject property are not for the Commission's consideration. If there are questions about matters that are not addressed here this evening, those may be referred to the Planning Department or to City Technical Staff as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kirkman, do we have any continuances?
We do not.
Thank you so much. Okay, with that said and done, it's my understanding that we have one case in opposition, and that case is Z-25-08-001, and it is 6846 Banning Road, a PUD. I won't mention the other five roads. Now, I'm just going to read off the additional cases that we have, just in case, just to make certain that there's no one in the chamber that's in opposition to any of the other cases. So bear with me. Z-25-06-003, 3725 McConnell Road. Z-25-06-004, McConnell Road Right-of-Way. Z-25-0-007, 1143 Pleasant Ridge Road. Z-25-08-002, 4265 Hamburg Mill Road. Z-25-08-003, 3823 Yanceyville Street. Z-25-08-004, 9D220 West Market Street. Z-25-08-005, 2909 Horsepin Creek Road. Z-25-08-006, 509 Mackey Road. Z-25-08-007, 2701 North O'Henry Boulevard. All right, if you have any opposition to those, will you raise your hand? All right, seeing none, we look good. How about online? Do we have people online?
No one registered opposition for those cases, Chair Magid.
Great, so we will proceed to the expedited agenda. Item PLP-25-21 and Z-25-06-003, an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial, for the properties identified as 3711, 3713, 3719, and a portion of 3725 McConnell Road and 4711, 4722, 4722-ZZ, 4742, and 4749, Old School Road, generally described as north of McConnell Road and east of Clap Farms Road, and north and south of Old School Road, 103.74 acres. And then we have the right-of-way for that one, which is PLP-25-21, the same annexation number, and Z-25-06-004, an annexation, original zoning and rezoning request for County AG Agricultural and City CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial and City CDRM-18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily-18, to City LI Light Industrial for the properties identified as a portion of McConnell Road Right-of-Way and a portion of Clap Farm Right-of-Way, generally described as McConnell Road east of Clap Farm Road and Clap Farms Road, north and south of Old School Road, 5.79 acres. And Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it contains approximately 109.53 acres. This is split into two cases. 103.74 acres of that is private property and is the request identified as Z-25-06-003, which is an original zoning request from County AG to City CDLI. The other portion of the property is, or of this request, is Z-25-06-004, which is portions of right-of-way of McConnell Road and Clap Farms Road. And that is an original zoning and rezoning request from County AG, City CDLI, and City CDRM-18. And the request is to take it to straight City LI. North of the request is Zone Agricultural. East of the request is City R3 and City CDR5. South of the request is Agricultural, City Light Industrial, CDLI, and some multifamily zoning to the south there as well. And then to the west is CDLI and County Agricultural. This is the aerial map of the subject property. The subject property currently contains single-family dwellings, agricultural land, portions of McConnell Road and Clap Farms Road. And north of the request contains single-family dwellings and agricultural land. East of the request contains I-840. South of the request contains multifamily dwellings, truck, equipment rental, and undeveloped land. West of the request contains single-family dwellings, agricultural land, and warehouse uses. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the property as planned industrial on the future built-form map and industrial on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request is supported by the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan's growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to increase and preserve the inventory of developable sites for corporate and industrial uses. The request also supports the prioritizing sustainability goal to build economic resilience, expanding the local economy's ability to withstand and adjust to disruptions and changes at the regional, national, and global scales. The proposed CDLI zoning district as condition limits uses to those that are compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed LI zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate limited manufacturing, wholesaling, warehousing, research, and development, and related commercial service activities, which in their normal operations have little or no adverse effect upon adjoining properties. This request would permit uses that are present on adjacent tracks. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions from the Commissioners? All right, seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comment? You have up to two minutes. Okay, the applicant, the Attorney for the applicant has declined. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners? Okay, without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion. First, we need a motion for the annexation and then one for the original zoning.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, I make a motion for annexation, PLP-25-21.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Ms. O'Connor. We will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. Now we need an original zoning, please.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, item Z-25-06-003, County to CD, Additional District to Light Industrial. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action recommend approval of the rezoning, of the original zoning request for the properties at 3711, 3713, 3717, and a portion of 3725 McConnell Road and 4711, 4721, 4721-ZZ to 4742 and 4749, Old School Road from County AG Agriculture to City CD LI, Conditional District Light Industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers action taken to be reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built-form map and future land use map. The proposed City CD LI zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area, and it will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approvers in the public's interest. Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you very much. Now, we will take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. No, oh, yes, yes. Okay, so we definitely need an annexation and a original zoning request for the 6004. The annexation is the same, so we can, we don't have to do that.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, I make a recommendation of rezoning for Z-25-06-004. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action is to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at a portion of McConnell Road Right-of-Way and a portion of Clap Farms Road Right-of-Way, from County AG Agriculture to City CD LI, Conditional District Light Industrial, and City CD-RM-18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily-18 to City LI Light Industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action to be taken reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built-form map and future land use map. The proposed City LI zoning district permit uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approvers in the public's best interest.
Second, Warshay Downing.
Thank you, Mr. Downing, for the second. All those in favor signify by, we'll take the vote now. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. The next item. Item PLP-25-29 and Z-25-07-007, an annexation and original zoning and rezoning request for County PI, Public and Institutional, City PI, Public and Institutional, City R3, Residential Single Family 3, and City CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial to City PU D, Planned Unified Development and consideration of the required unified development plan for the properties identified as 1143 and 1163 Pleasant Ridge Road, generally described as west of Pleasant Ridge Road and north of West Friendly Street, 74.30 acres. And Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is the zoning map of the area showing that the subject properties contain approximately 74.3 acres and are located west of Pleasant Ridge Road and north of West Market Street. As you stated, this is an annexation, original zoning, and rezoning request from County PI, City PI, City R3, and City CDLI to City PU D. North of the request is Zone City R3 and County Agricultural. East of the request is Zone City CDLI and County Agricultural. South of the request is Zone City CDLI, City PI, City CDRM-18, and County Agricultural. And west of the request is Zone City PI, City CDRM-18, and County Agricultural. The aerial map shows that the subject properties are currently undeveloped. North of the request contains single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. Each of the requests contains warehouse uses and commercial vehicle parking. South of the request contains indoor/outdoor recreation and religious assembly use. West of the request contains religious assembly uses, common elements, and undeveloped land. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant and advertised associated with the request. And this is the Unified Development Plan, which was recommended for approval by the Technical Review Committee on August 14th. And in recommending approval of the request, staff note that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban general on the future built-form map and the future land use map designates the subject properties as being located within the Western Area Plan. The Western Area Plan designates the subject properties as public and institutional and employment area. The proposed rezoning request supports the Comprehensive Plan's filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for a more vibrant, livable Greensboro, as well as the creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. And staff noted that the proposed PU zoning district as condition is primarily intended to accommodate a mix of residential housing types and complementary non-residential uses. The proposed original zoning and rezoning request allows uses that are compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. May I ask any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from the Commissioners? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes. Okay, thank you for being here. And the applicant's lawyer has declined. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain, we need an annexation, an original zoning, and then the third one is the UDP.
Sandra O'Connor, I move for the annexation.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Peterson. We will take a vote. All those in favor of the annexation, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes nine to zero. That constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. Now we need... Now, we need an original zoning.
Yes, Sandra O'Connor, Z twenty-five O seven O O seven. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at eleven forty-three and eleven sixty-three Pleasant Ridge Road from County P I public and institutional, city P I public and institutional, city R three residential single-family three, and city C D L I conditional district light industrial to city P U D planned unified development with the adopted, uh, G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed city P U D zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, a second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Peterson. We will now take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting, and now we need the U D P, please.
Yes, Sandra O'Connor, I move approval of the unified development plan. Mary Skane, second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Ms. Skane. We will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee paid within ten days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited is item P L P twenty-five dash thirty-six and Z twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-two, an annexation and original zoning request from County R S forty residential single-family to city C D R M five conditional district residential multifamily five for the property identified as forty-two sixty-five Hamburg Mill Road, generally described as south of Hamburg Mill Road and east of Horseshoe Drive, one point five zero two acres. And Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Maggott. This is the zoning, this is the zoning map of the subject property, which contains approximately one point five zero two acres and is located south of Hamburg Mill Road and east of Horseshoe Drive. So, this is an annexation request and an original zoning request from County R S forty to city C D R M five. North, east, and south of the request are zoned Summerfield R S, and west of the request is zoned Summerfield Agricultural. This is the aerial map of the subject property, which contains a single-family dwelling. North, east, south, and west of the request all contain single-family dwellings. This is the, uh, zoning condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the original zoning, staff notes that the G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan's future built form map currently designates similar nearby properties as urban general, and, uh, the future land use map designates nearby properties as residential. The proposed original zoning request supports the comprehensive plans' creating great places goal to have a citywide network of unique neighborhoods, which offer residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed C D R M five zoning district as condition would limit permitted uses to those that are compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to existing residential and agricultural uses on adjacent properties. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a, any comments? You have up to two minutes.
Tom Turner for the applicant, we do not make any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Commissioner Turner?
We need an annexation and an original zoning.
Uh, for, move for annexation. An original zoning.
I mean, we need an, no, first, the annexation for the P L P twenty-five dash thirty-six.
Okay, for P L P twenty-five dash thirty-six, move for annexation.
Thank you.
Mary Skane, second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner and Ms. Skane. Okay, we will vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. Um, let me see where I am. Okay, this constitutes, uh, a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. Now, we need the original zoning.
For Z twenty-five zero-eight zero-zero-two, forty-two sixty-five Hamburg Mill Road. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at forty-two sixty-five Hamburg Mill Road from County R S forty residential single-family to city C D R M five conditional district residential multifamily five to be consistent with the adopted G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed city C D R M five zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Mary Skane, second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner and Ms. Skane. We'll take a vote now. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. Before we go on to this next case, I'd just like to say we've just annexed, um, three properties into Greensboro, uh, uh, and with the approval of the City Council, that's a hundred and seventy-seven acres. We've, with the McConnell, McConnell Road, it was six hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial. With the Pleasant Ridge Road, it was twenty-eight thousand square feet, two hundred and fifty multifamily, sixty townhomes, and seventy-five single-family homes. And with Hamburg, it's, um, uh, a, a R M five, so that's seven more residential units. And now, we'll move on. Item Z twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-three, a rezoning request for R M residential single-family five to C D R M eight conditional district residential multifamily eight for the property identified as thirty-eight twenty-three Yanceville Street, generally described as west of Yanceville Street and north of Kenyon Street, two point seven acres. And hello, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Maggott. This is the zoning map showing that the subject property contains approximately two point seven acres and described as west of Yanceville Street and north of Kenyon Street. This is a rezoning request from R five to C D R M eight. North, east, south, and west of the request are zoned R five. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling. North, east, south, and west of the request contain single-family dwellings. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. In recommending approval of the request, staff note that the G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan designates this site as urban general and ex-urban on the future built form map and as residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports both the comprehensive plans' creating great places goal to expand Greensboro citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the building community connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. Staff note that the proposed C D R M zoning district as condition would allow residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding area with an appropriate proposed residential density. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to eight minutes, uh, two minutes, sorry. Anybody here? Okay. Seeing none, we will, uh, close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair. Let me make a, a motion for item number Z twenty-five zero-eight zero-zero-three, three-eight-twenty-three Yanceville Street. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning requests for the property at three-eight-two-three Yanceville Street from R five residential single-family five to C D R M eight conditional district residential multifamily eight. To be consistent with the adopted G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan, it considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed C D R M eight zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in public interest.
Commissioner Gill, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Peterson. And now, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee paid within ten days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeals. The next item, item Z twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-four, a rezoning request from R three residential single-family three and C D dash O conditional district office to C D dash O conditional district office for the properties identified as ninety-two O six and ninety-two twenty West Market Street and a portion of West Market Street right-of-way, generally described as north and east of West Market Street and south of Kidd Road, twenty-one point forty-six acres. And Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Maggott. The zoning map of the property shows that the subject property is approximately twenty-one point forty-six acres and is located north and east of West Market Street and south of Kidd Road. As you stated, this is a request from R three to, and C D O to C D O. The, north of the request is zone County R S forty. East of the request is zone County R S forty and County Agricultural. South of the request is zone city R three and city P I, and west of the request is zone city R three and city C L. The subject property currently contains single-family dwellings. North of the request contains undeveloped land and single-family dwellings. East of the request contains single-family dwellings. South of the request contains single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, and Colfax Elementary School, and west of the request contains single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, and a residential office conversion. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff note that the G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan's future built form map designates the subject property as urban general. The comprehensive plan's future land use map shows the properties as being inside the western area plan, which designates the properties as residential. The proposed rezoning request supports both the comprehensive plans' filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant, livable Greensboro, and the creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed C D O zoning district would allow land uses that are compatible with the general character of the area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent properties. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Isaacson. I just wanted to add one thing. This is a cleanup, correct? Because we had this in February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five?
No, basically, what they're doing is adding an additional property that was not available at the time to the overall development, so they potentially have another access on West Market Street.
Thank you for that clarity. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Regarding Z twenty-five dash O eight dash O O four, um, ninety-two O six and ninety-two twenty West Market Street and the right-of-way. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at ninety-two O six and ninety-two twenty West Market Street and a portion of West Market Street right-of-way from R three residential single-family three and C D O conditional district office to C D O conditional district office to be consistent with the adopted G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed C D O zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Sandra O'Connor, I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Turner and Ms. O'Connor. Now, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee paid within ten days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. We have just passed a, um, assisted living nursing home with a hundred and twenty-five beds. The next item, item Z twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-five, a rezoning request from C D C H conditional district commercial high and C D B P conditional district business park to C D P I conditional district public and institutional for the properties identified as twenty-nine O nine and twenty-nine O nine Y Y Horsepen Creek Road, generally described as east of Horsepen Creek Road and south of Jessup Grove Road, thirty-five point thirty-seven acres. And Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Maggott. The zoning map of the area shows, as you stated, that the property, properties are approximately thirty-five point thirty-seven acres and located east of Horsepen Creek Road and south of Jessup Grove Road. This is a request from C D C H and C D B P to C D P I. North of the request is zone P U D planning and development. East of the request is zoned R three. South and west of the request are zoned R three and P I. The aerial map shows that the subject properties currently contain a medical facility under construction. Note, north of the request contains multifamily dwellings, common elements, and drainage way and open space. East of the request contains undeveloped land. South of the request contains single-family dwellings and an outdoor recre- and outdoor recreation associated with a nearby private school. West of the request contains single-family dwellings, a private school, and an indoor-outdoor recreation facility. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff note that the G S O twenty forty comprehensive plan designates- plan designates this site as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. Staff note that the proposed rezoning request supports the GSO twenty-fourty comprehensive plan's filling in our framework goal to invest in building and maintaining quality, accessible public recreation centers, laboratories, neighborhood park facilities, and other services to sustain livable neighborhoods and the building community connections goal to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families. The proposed CDPI zoning district as condition would limit uses to all uses within the medical facilities use category. The proposed uses are compatible with the general character of the area and its continued development trends. The change in zoning for this property is appropriate given its location and proximity to the Horsepen Creek Road thoroughfare. And with that, have to ask any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Would the applicant like to speak? Okay, any questions before we close the public hearing? I just wanted to say that I'm a little... The state certified a certificate of need for this hospital facility? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. So we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Commissioner Stu Nichols. Regarding item Z twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-five, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at twenty-nine-oh-nine and twenty-nine-oh-nine YY, Horsepen Creek Road, from CDCH, conditional district commercial high, and CDBP, conditional district business park, to CDPI, conditional district public and institutional, to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty-fourty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CDPI zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Gilmore. Now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee paid within ten days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting, and all adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. And I'd just like to say, this is coming to us in two phases. The first phase is a hundred and sixty thousand square foot medical office building and a twenty-six thousand square foot ambulatory surgery center. And the second phase is a hundred and sixty thousand square foot hospital. Thank you for bringing this. The next item on our agenda is Z twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-six, a rezoning request from CDRM twenty-six, conditional district residential multifamily twenty-six to RM twenty-six residential multifamily twenty-six for property identified as fifty-nine-oh-nine Mackey Road, generally described as west of Mackey Road and north of West Gate City Boulevard, three point one-five acres. And Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Magid. The zoning map shows that subject property is approximately three point one-five acres and located west of Mackey Road and north of West Gate City Boulevard. As you stated, this is a rezoning request from CDRM twenty-six to straight RM twenty-six. North and east of the request are zone CM and CH. South of the request is zone CM and Town of Jamestown Commercial. West of the request is zone Town of Jamestown Industrial and City Commercial Medium. The subject property currently contains a vacant structure and undeveloped land. North of the request contains shopping centers and a former bank. East of the request contains a shopping center and a pharmacy. South of the request contains a pharmacy and self-storage facility, and west of the request contains vacant land. And in recommending approval of the request, staff note that the GSO twenty-fourty comprehensive plan designates the property as urban general on the future built form map and the future land use map designates the property as residential and commercial. Staff note that the proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life and a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework goal to encourage higher density, mixed-use walkable insult development, and ensure mixed-use projects both strengthen and add value to the community. And the proposed RM twenty-six zoning district permits uses that are compatible with uses present in the surrounding area and would increase the range of choice and supply of housing in close proximity to a variety of commercial service uses. And have to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make any comments? You have up to two minutes. I don't think he's here. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Any, any questions from the commissioners?
I had a question of the applicant. Who's apparently not here.
Hi, my name is Derek Burr. I'm from Kitty Academy. I am not the applicant, but I'm happy to answer any questions of the proposed use of this property. Oh, Jimmy is here.
I am the applicant. I'm here. Partik Patel. Or, and Jimmy.
Will you please put on your Zoom? Your camera, your camera, so that, I'm sorry, your video, so we can see you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Please, please give us your name and address.
So I'm Partik Patel. So we, we currently, we, we have the, oh, we own the Kitty Academy of Cornelius and Lake Norman, and we're planning to build the Kitty Academy of Greensboro here. I currently live in four-forty Bing Crosby Boulevard, Advance, in North Carolina, but we're planning to build a house in Grandover, so I'm planning to relocate over there. But we're, we own a Fairfield and a town place in Greensboro as well, so we have a lot of, we do commercial business in Greensboro as well.
Mr. Patel, this is Marys Gaines. My question is, this parcel was rezoned in April of twenty-twenty-one with two conditions. One, that it was limited to seventy-six multifamily dwellings. It was limited to a maximum of fifty feet and four stories in height. In this new request, you have removed all the conditions. What can you tell us about why you removed those conditions?
So whenever we spoke with the people that we're purchasing the land from, so the current owners, they were, they basically stated that we can, the owners are willing to change it to a childcare zoning, and those people that currently own it are the ones that put in the zoning provisions before that were preventing that from happening. So, I mean, if the owner group, the previous owners are willing to, like, you know, make the change and they're selling us that land, then I don't think it should be a problem. But basically, the land is a flat land. There's not, it's, is built, is surrounded by a bunch of commercial properties, so you wouldn't be able to do any type of residential zoning there. It's right behind a Walgreens, so it's, I mean, in terms of the parcel, it is like built for a childcare-type facility, more so than any type of residential community. And there is like a vacant property, but it's really old. We can't really get into it. We'd have to, like, purchase the property and tear down all the trees to be able to get to that facility. But it's kind of small, so we think that it would work for the childcare zoning provisions. But Derek can speak more to it as well. So Derek's come, is from the Kitty Academy side, so the corporate side, and she handles the construction-type related questions from their end.
All right, I need to ask staff. We're getting into a lot of conversation about daycare centers. And the RM twenty-six zoning that he's requested, you have to have subject to use conditions in order for it to be used as a daycare center. So what are we, what are we voting on here?
You're voting on everything in the RM twenty-six district. Let me be clear about that, too. So still, I have the options for residential and everything else. Schools and churches are uses that are allowed in all zoning districts, so those will be allowed as uses within the RM twenty-six, and then daycare centers as well. And I'm looking right now to see if there's anything there. I don't think there is for a commercial center. We have, we have commercial daycares in the RM zoning elsewhere in the city. We have commercial daycare centers with RM zoning elsewhere in the city.
All right, under our guidelines, it talks about conditions. It's permitted, daycare centers are permitted.
Right.
Subject to use conditions.
Right, and really, the only, the only use conditions you have for, would be a child daycare home by our definition. Basically, top describing those as commercial use. If it's a greater-than-threaker site, then it has to have access from a thoroughfare or collector's street, which Mackey Road would be a, meet that requirement. So there really isn't a whole lot of additional standards in our ordinance. It refers basically to the state of North Carolina that they have to meet all of their requirements, but there's not a lot of extra standards in the LDO for this use.
And those additional standards would come in play at the TRC level?
Yes, right. As part of any plan review, we do apply them in that point.
That's all I have.
Well, when I looked at, when I looked at it, the height was different. On a RM twenty-six, it could go up to eighty feet in height, and just because of the land, it could go up to eighty-one units. Is that something, is the applicant still on the line? Is that something you're considering?
Oh, I'm still on the line. I can't, daycares are all one-story. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Chair Magid, with it being a straight rezoning without conditions, I just want to remind the board, you have to be comfortable with the full gamut of uses that could, could be open, so I don't want there to be a reliance on something that's not baked into a condition.
We're not designing the site. We just want to know what he's going to do with it.
Yeah, yeah, we're confused.
The applicant is indicating a child daycare center. But we're just reminding the condition that you're thinking the whole, everything in the district is what's being allowed, yes.
It's a child daycare center. It's for ages six weeks to five years, under the franchise in Kitty Academy. So we have two locations that are similar to this, and it's all one-story building, and it would be eleven rooms. So each room would be designated to a certain age group. You'd have two infant rooms, two toddler rooms, two two-year-old, two three-year-old, and two four-year-old rooms.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? I apologize. I want to make sure that...
Yes, it does. That was very helpful. Thank you so much. Any questions from the, any other questions from the commissioners?
Sandra O'Connor, I just want to clarify that what we are saying, however, is any use appropriate under this rezoning we should be comfortable with if we vote in favor.
Thank you for that clarity. Okay, I will entertain a motion. Would someone make the motion, please? Thank you.
Regarding Z twenty-five dash oh-eight dash oh-oh-six, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at five-zero-zero-nine Mackey Road from CDRM twenty-six, conditional district residential multifamily twenty-six, to RM twenty-six residential multifamily twenty-six, to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty-fourty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed RM twenty-six zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable and reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner and Mr. Gilmore. Now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't see that. Can I see that again? Sorry. Thank you. All those opposed? That passes nine to zero. This approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee paid within ten days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. And the next item on the expedited is item Z twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-seven, a rezoning request from CM Commercial Medium to CDRM twenty-six, conditional district residential multifamily twenty-six for the property identified as twenty-seven-oh-one A, North O'Henry Boulevard, generally described as west of North O'Henry Boulevard and east of Sixteenth Street and south of Longfellow Street, five point four-six acres. And Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it is, contains five point four-six acres and is located west of North O'Henry Boulevard and east of Sixteenth Street and south of Longfellow Street. This is a rezoning request from CM two, conditional district RM twenty-six. North of this request is zone R five. East of the request is CH for commercial high and conditional district heavy industrial. South of the request is commercial medium and office, and west of the request is zoned RM eighteen and commercial medium. This is the aerial map of the subject property, which currently contains temporary residential uses. North of the request contains single-family dwellings. East of the request contains a warehouse and a religious assembly use. South of the request contains an assisted living facility and self-storage, and west of the request contains single and multifamily dwellings. This is the zoning condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this, of this request, staff notes that the GSO twenty-fourty comprehensive plan designates this site as urban general on the future built form map and is residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the comprehensive plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life, a variety of quality housing choices, and the plan's creating great places goal to meet housing needs with a sufficient and diverse supply of housing products, prices, and location. The proposed CDRM twenty-six zoning district as condition limits available uses to residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed maximum gross density is approximate, or is appropriate as the subject property is located in proximity to major thoroughfares. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, materials, height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the adjacent residential tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Does the commission have any questions?
Just have a statement.
Okay. Seeing none, would the applicant like to present any comments? You have up to two minutes. All right. Thank you. Any, any questions from?
I just have a comment. I am rather pleased by the comprehensive development of this particular area, the former Regency Inn. It was an eyesore, and now it purports to have tremendous development for that side of town, and also see the community engagement, but also the intentional development that is happening in the area. So I do say thank you. Salute to your team. All right.
I had a question for the applicant. You want to come to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Cynthia Blue from the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department.
And you're representing the city of Greensboro, correct? Okay. So this says maximum dwelling units is a hundred and thirty units. Could you give us a little understanding? Um, could you give us a little understanding of, of what this request is?
Sure, um, I do actually have a brief presentation if that's more helpful.
Two minutes, you have two minutes.
Two minutes, all right. All right, just very briefly, the timeline of the, the project that we are on. The city did acquire the, uh, former Regency Inn motel site in October of twenty twenty-four. I think those of you who are familiar with that area know what condition that that site was in and the level of service calls from fire, EMS, police, all of those. It had become a real nuisance property. For the, for the past three years, we've been using it for emergency housing, uh, both winter emergency and currently, right now, the summer doorways program for summer emergency housing. If you've been out through there, you see the little, the palace shelter houses that are out there. Um, we did put out a development request for proposals in October of twenty twenty-four, and, um, the RFP Review Committee has recommended DHIC, which is a very well-known nonprofit developer out of Raleigh. Um, this, we are at the point now of the city-initiated rezoning process, and then we hope to go to council with the recommendation to sell the land to DHIC for development. Um, in terms of communications, um, a press release went out on July eleventh. We had extensive media coverage, um, as well as, um, we put it out through city social media sources, Nextdoor. Uh, we sent out letters, um, I believe the city sent letters to a hundred and nine, and then we sent actually to the entire neighborhood adjacent to the property. So we sent two hundred and nine letters out. Um, the neighborhood meeting was on July twenty-ninth. We had really good feedback. There's a summary in your package of the feedback from the neighborhood. And then we also went to the Concerned Citizens of Northeast Greensboro's August meeting and presented there as well to about forty people in attendance. Uh, we've been collecting an email list of folks who are interested in tagging along and, and seeing how we go, how we come through with the project. And very quickly, this rezoning request is currently zoned, um, Commercial Medium for the previous use as a hotel. We are requesting CDRM twenty-six, um, limited to a hundred and thirty units. And the anticipated use is a two-phase multifamily development of a hundred and fourteen units, fifty-four of those restricted senior units, and sixty family units. Um, the, the site is excellent for housing development. We're looking forward to moving forward with this project.
Thank you very much. Okay, any, any questions from the commissioners? Okay, I'm glad we, thank you for telling us what it is. We really appreciate that. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for agenda item number Z twenty-five zero-eight zero-zero-seven. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at two seven zero-one A North O Henry Boulevard from CM Commercial Medium to CDRM twenty-six, Conditional District Residential Multifamily twenty-six to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Number one, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Number two, the proposed CDRM twenty-six zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. And number three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner, surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Sandra O'Connor, I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Ms. O'Connor. We will now, um, take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes nine-two-zero. Um, this approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee paid within ten days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Um, the, the commissioners have asked for a five-minute break, so we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we'll be back in, at ten till. Recording stopped.
The future of aviation is right here at Piedmont Triad International Airport. And when you see what is going to be built here, you will think you've stepped into a time machine.
This partnership is about more than building airplanes. It's about building futures. North Carolina has one of the most impressive talent ecosystems in the country. From your K through twelve public schools to your top-ranked universities, best-in-class community colleges. We are thrilled to work with you to build the pipeline of engineers, technicians, and advanced manufacturing experts that are going to help us reshape aviation globally.
What did it take to make this announcement happen today?
It took hundreds of people. People in Guilford County, our surrounding counties, at the state, our state legislators, all of the economic development, if you add it up, maybe close to a thousand people who have touched this project. And this project turned around really fast. I'm actually surprised how quickly it went from the beginning to the announcement.
And specifically, what did it take within the city to help make this happen?
Water and sewer. You know, when you look around at this whole airport campus, this is all Greensboro water and sewer. And so our water and sewer department did yeoman's work, making sure that we had the capacity and the ability to feed a project as big as this.
I mean, now with HondaJet and FedEx here, and Boom, and now.
Marshall.
And Mar, all these. So what does he think about aviation in Greensboro? And how did we become this place?
Well, you know, years ago, we talked about having this airport be in Areatropolis. And people laugh, like, what's an Areatropolis? Well, here it is. You know, it is to have these amazing employers and then all of the supply chain that will come around it. For just about every job that's created out here, you can count on maybe five spin-off jobs elsewhere throughout the region.
And talking about jobs, this is going to bring a lot of jobs.
A lot of jobs at an average wage of almost ninety thousand dollars. Those are life-changing wages. And, you know, there will be customized training for, for people. So, you know, if there are people watching us and they think, well, I'll never get the jobs, that's not true. Go to the, um, Guilford Works, find out more about it. Go to the community colleges, there is customized training. We want our residents to fill these jobs.
What does this mean personally to you?
Well, you know, I only have about a hundred and sixty-nine days left.
Not that you're counting.
Not counting. But it's really great to go out on a high note with all of these wonderful announcements that we've had over the last five, six years.
Having so many good things. I loved when the governor said North Carolina was first in flight and the future of flight.
I think there might be another license plate in there, future of flight. You know, it is great because right now I feel we are at the epicenter of economic development, right here in Guilford County, Greensboro. Not only is North Carolina looking at us, but today the world is looking at us.
I got to say it again, more than fourteen thousand jobs paying an average salary of more than eighty-nine thousand dollars. And so, of course, so many people are going to be asking, when is this happening? How can I get involved? The best way to be involved is to really stay in touch by following the city of Greensboro, the Guilford County, also Guilford Works, the Chamber of Commerce. You can also learn more about Jet Zero. Their website is jetzero.aero.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to remind you, please remember that you are sharing the designated time limits for speaking, and we want everyone tonight to feel fairly and evenly heard. Okay, so just, anyhow, all right, here we go. Item PLP twenty-five dash thirty-one. PLP twenty-five dash thirty-one again. Uh, they're all, yeah, okay. I'll just, I'll just add in the correct numbers, okay? Because I know what they are.
I can do this quickly.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Perfect. Thank you. Item PLP twenty-five dash thirty-one, PLP twenty-five dash thirty-two, PLP twenty-five dash thirty-three, PLP thirty-five, that, uh, twenty-five dash thirty-four, PLP twenty-five dash thirty-five, and Z twenty-five dash zero-eight zero-zero-one. An annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural, County GS three, Residential Single Family three, County RS twenty, Residential Single Family, County RS thirty, Residential Single Family, County RS forty, Residential Single Family, County CZ dash zero, L zero, Conditional Zoning Limited Office, and CZ GB, Conditional Zoning General Business, to City PUD Planned Unit Development. And consideration of a required unified development plan for the property as identified as sixty-eight forty-six Banning Road, fifty-four eleven and fifty-four eleven ZZ Centerfield Road, fifty-seven ninety Meadow Pond Court, sixty-seven eighty-four Meadow View Drive, thirty-six sixty-eight, thirty-six seventy-two, thirty-six seventy-four, thirty-six eighty-three, thirty-six eighty-five, thirty-six eighty-seven, thirty-seven twenty-seven, and thirty-six thirty-four Oak Ridge Road, thirty-one thirty-six, thirty-one forty-four, thirty-one forty-eight, thirty-two hundred, thirty-two oh-three, thirty-two oh-four, thirty-two oh-nine, thirty-two fifteen, thirty-two nineteen, thirty-two twenty, thirty-two twenty-one, and thirty-two thirty-nine Pleasant Ridge Road, seventy-one nineteen Rabbit Hollow Road, sixty-nine twenty-five ZZ, sixty-nine thirty-five, sixty-nine fifty-five ZZ, and seventy thirty-six Summerfield Road, seventy-six thirty-one, seventy-six fifty, and seventy-six fifty-two DeBeau Road, seventy-two eleven and seventy-two seventeen ZZ Wyatt Drive, fifty-nine twenty and fifty-nine thirty Khaki Place, all of Khaki Place right of way, all of Banning Road right of way, a portion of Brook Bank Road right of way, a portion of Four Cedars Drive right away, portions of Pleasant Ridge Road right away, portions of Oak Ridge Road right away, and portions of Interstate seventy-three right away, nine hundred and twelve point thirty-eight acres. And Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair Magid. This is the zoning map of the subject property. And generally describing, um, the property, it, it contains approximately nine, um, nine hundred and twelve point three-eight acres and is, again, generally described as being east and west of I seventy-three, north and south of Oak Ridge Road, west of Summerfield, and west of Summerfield Road. Uh, the request includes five annexations. Um, so all of the PLP numbers that were read out, those are all annexation requests. Um, all of the property that are associated with those annexation requests are incorporated into one zoning request. Uh, that zoning request is to go from County Agricultural, County RS three, which is Residential Single Family, uh, County RS twenty, which is another, um, Residential Single Family zoning district, RS thirty, County RS forty, County, uh, Conditional Zoning Limited Office, County Conditional Zoning General Business. And all of that to go, is the request is to go to City Planned Unit Development. Uh, and also there's a consideration of a unified development plan at the end. I'm going to describe around the property. I'm going to start on the northernmost, uh, block that you see and, um, kind of describe down the east side, southwest, up back to the north. So it's, it's a lengthy presentation, but that's, that's, uh, generally how it's going to go. Um, north of the request is, uh, zone Summerfield, uh, Conditional Zoning Industrial, Summerfield Open Space Residential, Summerfield Industrial, Summerfield Residential, and Summerfield Agricultural. East of the request is zoned Summerfield, uh, Residential, Summerfield Industrial, um, Summerfield Business, Summerfield, uh, Conditional Zoning Business, and Summerfield Agricultural. South of the request is zoned City Parkland and Natural Resource Area, Summerfield Agricultural, Summerfield Residential, Summerfield Conditional Zoning Open Space Residential, and Summerfield Conditional Zoning Agricultural. And west of the request is zoned, uh, Summerfield Open Space Residential. And west of the request is zoned Summerfield Open Space Residential, Summerfield Residential and Summerfield Agricultural. This is the aerial map. The subject property currently contains agricultural uses, single-family dwellings, special events facility, office use, and a subdivision clubhouse, which is technically an accessory use to an improved subdivision. North of the request contains single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, and a public park, and manufactured home park. East of the request contains an industrial use, a school, single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, another manufactured home park, and an overnight accommodations use. South of the request contains a school, single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, public parkland. West of the request contains single-family dwellings, I seventy-three, and undeveloped land. So I'm going to describe the subject properties, and again, starting at the north, and working our way around. This image shows the subject property from Debo Road, which is identified with Annexation Case Number P L P twenty-five dash thirty-five. This is the subject property as seen from Kaki Place. This is Annexation Case Number twenty-five dash thirty-four. This is the subject property as seen from Oak Ridge Road. This is Case Number twenty-five dash thirty-four. If you guys are okay with it, I'm not going to say which case number, the P L P numbers for all of them, because it's a lot, but all annexation numbers are, cases are included in what I'm describing here. This is subject property as seen from Centerfield Road. This is subject property as seen from Pleasant Ridge Road. This is also subject property as seen from Pleasant Ridge Road. This is subject property as seen from Summerfield Road. This is also subject property as seen from Summerfield Road. Subject property as seen from Brook Bank Road. This is subject property on Oak Ridge Road. Now going to adjacent land uses. This image shows a single-family dwelling located north of the request on Debo Road, zoned Summerfield R S thirty. This image is of undeveloped land as seen from I seventy-three, and this is zoned Summerfield Industrial. This actually shows I seventy-three, and this is east of the request, and there's no, the Summerfield zoning map does not show a zoning classification for this property. This is an example of the single-family dwellings located east of the request on Debo Road, zoned Summerfield R S thirty. This image shows undeveloped land located east of the request, zoned Summerfield R S, and Summerfield C Z B N. B N is their business zoning district. This image shows a school located east of the request on Oak Ridge Road, zoned Summerfield Agricultural. This image shows examples of the single-family dwellings located east of the request, zoned Summerfield R S. This image shows a community park on Centerfield Road, located east of the request, zoned Summerfield Agricultural. And this is an example of the single-family dwellings located east of the request on Summerfield Drive, zoned Summerfield R S. This is an example of the single-family dwellings located each of the request on Pleasant Ridge Road. This is zoned Summerfield R S. And this is a bank that is located east of the request on Summerfield Road, zoned Summerfield B N. This is a shopping center located east of the request, zoned Summerfield C Z B N. This is a single-family dwelling located east of the request, zoned Summerfield C Z B N. This image shows manufactured home park located east of the request, zoned Summerfield Agricultural. This image shows overnight accommodations located east of the request, zoned Summerfield D N. This image shows what appears to be a single-family dwelling with accessory retail use located east of the request on Pleasant Ridge Road, zoned Summerfield R S. This image shows an example of the single-family dwellings located south of the request on Meadow Point Court, zoned Summerfield R S. This image shows Greensboro Parkland located south of the request on Bunch Road, zoned Greensboro P N R. That's Parkland and Natural Resources Area. This image shows driveway for two single-family dwellings located south of the request on Banning Road, zoned Summerfield Agricultural. This image shows I seventy-three located west of the request, again, no zoning is assigned to this property. This image shows an example of the single-family dwellings located west of the request on Catherine Louise Drive, zoned Summerfield O S R. This view is facing south on Debo Road, the subject property is on the left. And this view is farther down Debo Road, and the subject property, again, here is on the left. This view is facing southeast on Summerfield Road, the subject property is on the right. This is facing northwest on Summerfield Road, the subject property is on the left. This view is facing south on Pleasant Ridge Road, the subject property is on both sides of the road. And this is facing north on Pleasant Ridge Road, again, the subject property is on both sides of the road. This is facing northeast on Brook Bank Road, the subject property is on both sides. And this is southwest on Brook Bank Road, the subject property is on both sides of the road. This is facing east on Oak Ridge Road, the subject property is on both sides of the road. And this is facing west on Oak Ridge Road, the subject property crosses the road here as well. These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. The applicant submitted a Unified Development Plan that splits the property into multiple phases, and also known as villages on the Unified Development Plan. This zoning condition applies to phases one, two, and three. This zoning condition applies to phases four, five, nine, and ten. And this condition applies to phases six, seven, and eight. This is the representation of the Unified Development Plan. Again, you can see all of the different villages, and there are fifteen pages to this Unified Development Plan, but this is the cover page which represents the entire thing. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the Conference of Plans Future Built Form map currently designates similar nearby properties as urban general, and future land use map designates similar nearby properties as residential. The proposed original zoning request supports the Conference of Plans Great Places goal, to have a citywide network of unique neighborhoods which offer residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed planned unit development zoning district as condition is primarily intended to accommodate a broad mix of residential housing types and complementary non-residential land uses. The request also introduces innovative neighborhood design while preserving open space. The proposed original zoning request allows uses that are compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, height, visual buffers, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to existing residential and agricultural uses on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. That was quite a presentation. If the applicant would like to come forward, first, does the Commissioners have any questions at this point? Okay. If the applicant would come forward, you have up to ten minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Tom Tarrell, two-thirty North Elm Street. I'm here as the attorney for all of the applicants. We will do all of this as one presentation. I may speak at some time later this evening, but for now, I would just simply like to introduce Victor Dover, who is indisputably one of this country's leading urban planners.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Victor Dover. I'm a town planner and neighborhood designer with Dover Colan Partners and Coral Gables. First, where are the proposed villages? This map is simplified to show the darker green color, showing the city limits of the city of Greensboro today. The Christopher track, which was the one we brought to you earlier this year, is the one with the red line around it right in the center of your screen. And now, as promised, we're bringing you the other ten villages. The city of Greensboro today extends right up to and along the southern edge of what we call the middle villages. So this is a simplified version of the map, and you can see those middle villages in the center of your screen stretching from west to east, from the interstate to Brook Bank Road, to Pleasant Ridge Road, to Summerfield Road. And that's tying together east and west in isolated part of the region. At the top of the screen, the north villages are the ones that are clustered around the interchange of I seventy-three and Oak Ridge Road.
Excuse me for one minute. Is there any way we can send someone to figure out where that noise is coming from and try to control it?
It's coming from the courtyard area. I don't know specifically where.
I'm used to worse than jackhammers.
Okay.
Keep going if you can. Keep going. Thanks Luke. I'd just like to show you what's envisioned.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a legacy project, which is as much about conservation and stewardship as it is about real estate development. But we all know one of the delights out there is these long views across open spaces. And so we thought, what if, what if we could develop on part, but save the rest? In other words, fold up the development that would otherwise fill up the property, and then move it into the right places artfully? And that way, the villages would be set within this vast green network of fields and forests and parks. That's the biggest of the big ideas. But just to be clear, first things first, the bottom line, this green space preservation I'm describing would also exceed all the applicable city, county, state, and federal requirements for protection of natural resources. But the approach that we're proposing here, it does more than that. It will allow us to accommodate the growth, but still keep this beautiful pasture green forever. This is one of the example villages. We call this one Edwards Park. And what you can see in the map is that the development areas are tucked in closer together so that the best natural assets can remain whole and interconnected. That's the big idea. Now, there are more parts to this. That allows us to have an extensive trails and greenways system, building in a compact way makes room for that. And the founders of the villages envision rotating the houses so that they face the trails and greenways with the front porches instead of their backsides. And then I'm working through this kind of collection of different kinds of green spaces that bind the network together. In addition to the fields and forests and parks I talked about before, there's also the idea that each village would have its own central gathering space, a village green or a neighborhood square. And then the last, but not least, is the green tree-lined streets. So the goal here is to make it more connected and meaningful for birds and butterflies and water quality and so on, but also for humans, because this would provide a kind of connectedness that's missing in this part of the metropolitan region today. This map is when we put all those components I just described together across the middle villages, and I hope you can see why we call this, starting with the green parts. Now, another key idea is that although the villages will have lots of different kinds of places to live and to work, and to work from home, it'll also include other things to visit and walk to with short trips, like the coffee shop. And so our goal is to make sure that they're useful and interesting daily destinations within walking distance of every home. This is probably not sounding foreign to you, because I'm describing the kinds of neighborhoods for which you, Greensboro, invented your traditional neighborhood or T N district. And that was our starting point. When we worked up the development standards that are in this Unified Development Plan, we took our regulatory cues from the DNA in that ordinance. Another of the key ideas is to have the widest possible variety of housing. It's natural that there will be some large houses on larger lots as defense of prosperity that's marching across your region, but there will also be medium-sized homes and smaller homes and cottages that are on smaller clustered lots. And that would include single-family attached houses, also known as townhouses or row houses, that we think those can be used to create comfortable cozy streets like the ones you might find in Savannah or Old Town Alexandria or in Old Salem. That smaller cottages and bungalows format can be arranged with shared gardens. So we showed you that with the Christopher Village earlier this year. And then last, on the housing subject, two more things. The proposal is also to include some of what we call mansion apartment buildings, which look like a house but actually have four to eight units around their courtyard. Now, last, the city of Greensboro, like, and every housing advocacy organization and A A R P strongly recommend success-free dwelling units, or A D Us. And so we've doubled down on that idea. They're a great way to reinforce affordability and security and keep families together. We will also have apartments, and this has been much a subject of discussion over the years. Yes, we'll have some garden-style apartment buildings. We've planned these as street-friendly upgraded versions of the idea of garden apartments, and we would put them along those tree-lined streets, just like the townhouses or the houses facing with their front porches. The idea is when we arrange them in this way along traditional streets in traditional neighborhoods, the result will be much better than conventional apartment complexes. These two examples you've been seeing are from the Saunders Village, where Oak Ridge Road meets Interstate seventy-three. That's the triangle in the center of your screen, Saunders Village, which leads to another one of the key ideas. The thought is that the mixed uses are promoted throughout all the villages, but there's one village, Saunders Village, that is meant to be more of a shared center. This site's been zoned for a long time as a commercial shopping center site, so what we've done in the U D P is recast that so that now you have some shopping, like the grocery store and the retail and restaurants and so on, but also lodging and some workplaces and housing for a better balance. So I'm talking about the uses and where they would all be arranged, let's talk about traffic. The P U D has a two-stage procedure for analyzing the traffic and the transportation matters. The initial transportation assessment is a thing that follows a lot of collaboration between Kittleson Engineers and Greensboro Zone D O T. And big picture, what that found was everything I've shown you is doable from a transportation point of view. But there's another stage to the procedure. At each phase, in each phase, in the Unified Development Plan as a village, at each phase there would be a deeper analysis, a traditional traffic impact analysis or transportation impact study preceding development. And that's where that study will stipulate whatever the required actions are that will address transportation impacts at that time. The reason for this is that this is a thirty-year project with ten of those villages. And so we want to make sure that each of these transportation impact studies is responding to the real-world conditions, both with mobility and technology and workplaces and so on, of that time, and this two-stage procedure allows us to do that. Finished by reminding that, like with Christopher, this is not just in keeping with the Conference of Plan, but doubles down on a lot of the key individual goals. And, you know, as a planner, I have to say, this project kind of shows what's possible when we design on a larger canvas. What we're seeking is a level of connection. What we're seeking is a level of connectedness and coherence that piecemeal development would never allow. That's why it's as large as it is. So that's our summary, I look forward to answering your questions. Tom?
You have another minute, if you would like to...
Sixty-eight precious seconds.
Can we stop the clock, because there was a minute on it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank. Thank you, Mr. Dover.
Good evening, I'm Carol Carter.
Can you pull your microphone down closer to you?
I can, thank you, instead of standing on my tippy toes. My name is Carol Carter, I am a land use and transportation planner with over thirty years of experience. Speaking in favor, and I wanted to emphasize the amount of planning that has gone into this project. Normally, you don't see that as a zoning commission, you come in and you have proposed use in a map. But, um, Dover Col, I've had the opportunity to work with several times, and they are one of the best in the country, if not the best. And, with the commissioner going forward and hiring a, a planning firm and having as many community meetings as they have, is something unprecedented when you come before the zoning commission for the original zoning and annexation. And I believe that talks about the quality of this development.
You have fifty-three seconds, if you would like to...
We, we, we'll move on, we'll keep your meeting going.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Oh, is there one more?
Oh, there's one more, okay.
Dale Dunham, five eight zero five Stone Hill Drive, Summerfield, we've lived here twenty-two years. Where I'm coming from is we lived in the largest PD in the whole United States, and it was the fastest-growing area in the United States. I was on school board, my husband was on planning. We would pass three or four schools at a time with referendums, because the great, growth was so terrific. You know what must, and Ken was on, on the planning board, but we, we saw some of the mistakes that were made along the way. So we've learned a lot from them, from that. And I, I just really want to say what a professional presentation this has been. And everyone from Greensboro that I have met that is into planning or zoning, whatever you're doing, everyone is so professional. It's important to know that there is no Greensboro forced zoning. This is a voluntary, a voluntary zoning. There's rumors right now in Summerfield that we're going to all be just swallowed up by Greensboro. And I'm sorry, I don't have another minute or two, because I do have important things to say.
Well, we'll let you come back and speak at the rebuttal time first.
Okay.
Okay, so stay with us, thank you ma'am. Okay, um, next. Next, those wishing to speak in opposition, you have ten shared total minutes. And we have a Jim Bennett and a Mr. Nash who's online. And we have Jonathan Ballinger who's here. Do we have Mr. Nash online, are we ready for him, just want to make certain?
Yes, Chair Megan.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address.
Jim Bennett, sixty-eight oh one Banning Road, okay? I want, I want it known, I'm not for this subdivision, I'm not against it. Man owns property, he should be able to do with it what he wants. What I am asking is sixty-eight oh one Banning, I have an easement across part of his property, which when y'all came out there on your hayride, y'all didn't see that, okay? Mr. Couch, at that time, thought that, uh, Banning Road touched me, but it doesn't. For me to be able to do with my property the best use of it, either me or my family, Banning Road needs to touch my property. Like I say, I have an easement across it, my son has an easement across it. But if we are touched, that gives us time to use the best, uh, use of that land. I also want you to know, I'm surrounded by Armfield on the top, City of Greensboro on the bottom, which the town of, well, the city of Greensboro took part of that property from my family. My family's lived on that property for four generations. We want to keep it the way it is, okay? I do not want to be in the city of Greensboro. I really didn't want to be in the city, in the town of Summerfield, but I really didn't have a choice, okay? But, I'm a country boy, that's all I am. And I'm asking y'all to add to the zoning that he connects, Banning Road to my, my property and my son's property, as a condition. Town of Summerfield did that when it was rezoned originally. So, I don't see what a problem could be with that.
Thank you, duly noted, thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in opposition, we have a John, a Mr. Nash online? Can we go to Mr. Nash online?
Mr. Megan.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Can you put your, um, video on, please?
Well, I don't have a camera, so you're not going to see anything except a blank screen. Do you want me to proceed?
What? Oh, you don't have a camera, you don't have a camera, okay. Please proceed.
Ready?
Yes, give us your name and address.
I'll, um, I'll take a few minutes, just a, a couple of comments, uh, in general, I, I think...
First, give us your name and, first, give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's John Nash, I live in, uh, Henson Forest on Blue Aster Trace, and have lived there for the last twelve years, I'm very familiar with Summerfield.
What is your address, what is your address?
Do you want the number too?
Yes, please.
Six-three-two-nine Blue Aster Trace.
Thank you.
Okay. Two comments, one, uh, I do have some concerns, I'm primarily concerned with the transportation issue when you consider Revolution Academy on the two-lane road, the, the amount of traffic even now is horrendous in the morning and afternoon from seventy-three all the way to two-twenty. And I'm not really sure how they're going to deal with that. I've heard, uh, words about roundabouts and things like that, but I think that's a major area that's probably going to have to be addressed as the different phases proceed. The main thing I wanted to mention today is, uh, about Johnson Village. If you look at your map, Johnson Village is nowhere near anything else, it's like a little island sitting on the, uh, the, uh, west side of seventy-three. It's directly by Armfield subdivision, which has sixty houses right next to it, and I'd say the buffer is very minor between the development, if it occurs in that area, and this residential area. Directly across the street from Armfield is Henson Forest subdivision. So you have two major subdivisions on the, uh, on the west side of seventy-three that are not contiguous with the rest of the development, even though one map shows it, that's nothing but a culvert between, underneath seventy-three. And I think what will happen is, I think, uh, when you bring a development into that area that's other than single-family residential, I think it's going to have dramatic effect both on the traffic on that portion of Oak Ridge Road, as well as the value of the properties, uh, over there, uh, with those two subdivisions. So I would ask the planning board to segregate Johnson Village and make it, uh, single-family residential, and then do all the other villages as, uh, they have proposed. But look at Johnson as a separate entity in that regard, and those are my comments.
Thank you very, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Nash, I've written that down, and we'll, we'll get some answers, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And then there was a Jonathan Ballinger who's here, thank you.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Ballinger, I live at six-one-one-two Ballinger Road, Greensboro. I'm not against the, uh, development of the property. We have a hundred and thirty acres north of this property on the DeBeau, DeBeau Road property and along I seventy-three, uh, is farmland, we want to keep it that way. I talked to Mr. Couch, he, I expressed my concern about where water and sewer would go. He said it would not go across our property, I just want to be assured of that by the city, because I've not seen a site plan of any kind. And if I can be assured of that, I have no objection to anything. And he, he said he was not, uh, we just do not want the city of Greensboro to use eminent domain to come across our farm later, and that's our main concern. And so, if they can assure us, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, any more people in opposition who would like to speak? Okay. I just had, um, one follow-up question just to ask staff. Mr. Ballinger's talking about water and sewer going up, you know, and so forth. Would you explain what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do and what comes next?
Correct, right, I mean, basically, uh, your role here is to, uh, look at the annexation question, whether or not city services can be provided to all these properties, and the zoning that allows the different uses that are proposed on there. The specific, uh, configuration of how that infrastructure is laid out and how the development is done is going to be dealt with through the technical review process and the site planning process. So we wouldn't be able to answer that question at this point in time.
So that comes after this, so, Mr.? Okay, so, um, now, let's see, uh, anybody else who wants to, uh, speak in opposition? Because, because there's four minutes left. Okay, um, so we will, um, now do the rebuttal. The applicant has five minutes of rebuttal.
The applicant does not have a rebuttal, but we would like to defer to, uh, former mayor Dunham to come back.
There's this rumor that, that Greensboro is just going to gobble up everything in Summerfield. And, it's important to know that there is no forced annexation. This is a voluntary annexation, it's a thirty-year project. It's got an excellent plan to provide water, sewer, the, the important amenities, and I'm sure you're going to work through the traffic and some of these other things, uh, during that time, because it's been a very professional, uh, it's been professional. So, and with the, um, right now, though, and some of, one of the things to be careful, if you would please to make sure there's continuity of zoning, we don't have that in Summerfield. In our UGO, you can put a gas station next to a single-family home. So continuity of zoning, I think is going to be very important all over, and preserving, uh, the, the nature portions is going to be important in the roads. Right now, we have, in Summerfield, we do have new homes, uh, and, but we have homes that have been there for fifty years. And they're very concerned if their, if their home is going to be disrupted. But, um, there's no, uh, there's no forced annexation, and I'm sure you're going to have respect for the people that have been there for just as long. We really want to protect the farms, if the farms want to stay there, make sure that they have access to traffic or whatever they need. Keep that in mind, because this is going to be, maybe adjacent to that property. So we really want to protect the older homes and the farms and the, the existing homes also. Everything seems, you, you just, you're really professional, you seem to have this all together. I, I hope you have added with staff, uh, this is going to be a big project, maybe you will have to add a couple more professionals. But we really appreciate your help in respecting our homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tarrell, I have a couple of questions. I don't know, yeah, I, I'm, I'm a little confused because, uh, Mr. Nash mentioned, um, uh, Brookbank Road and the Armfield development there and Hanson Farm development. But he was talking about Johnson Village, which is on the other side of the interstate, and I don't see it touching Brookbank Road, um, at all. I see Henson, uh, Forest Drive is up around there. So I'm a little bit confused with his comment, you know, about that.
Let's see if we can get this back up. Johnson Village is, in fact, on the west side of Interstate seventy-three?
Right. But he mentioned Brookbank Road as being...
Can you show them what Brookbank, he's got it, okay.
The area that he was concerned about, and I remember seeing Henderson Farm and Armfield being on Brookbank, but Johnson's is...
Yeah.
To the west of the interstate, so...
That's right, Madam Chair, that the Brookbank Road is this street here, which leads from Oak Ridge Road down this way through the Armfield subdivision. There is, um, perhaps where the confusion comes from is that there's another portion of the original Armfield development, which was, is, is isolated to the west of Johnson Village and went to the west of I seventy-three. So that's where Henson Forest Drive extends south. Johnson Village is the one westernmost here, so it's on the west side of I seventy-three.
And, and the, um, two developments he's talking about is way over on, on Brookbank Road, that line, if you can just put your arrow on it, yeah. They're over and there, yeah, so that's why I was confused about...
There's a portion of the original Armfield, uh, development that started and then didn't, and then it didn't get finished, and Mr. Couch bought the remnant property, which extends into what we're calling Armfield, Armfield Village West and East here.
Okay, so that, so they don't, where he was talking about does not touch the Johnson Village?
There is a single-family subdivision on the long cul-de-sac, you know, my arrow is on...
But is that development, I don't think that development, is that Armfield too?
That is also called Armfield.
Oh, I didn't know it went on that side.
Hence the confusion.
Okay, I didn't realize it went on that side as well, okay, thank you for the clarity on it. But is Henson also over there?
So, there's Henson Farms, which is, uh, in this, generally in this area, along Brookbank Road, Henson Forest, north of the interstate and Oak Ridge Road, at the top left of your map.
Okay, thank you.
Both called Henson.
Okay, I did, I didn't, didn't look at that, okay, thank you for that clarity. I appreciate that. Yeah, the Banning Road, I, I just wanted to ask one other thing, Mr. Tarrell, uh, Mr. Dover, are you aware of the, um, easement on Banning Road?
Um, we've been made aware of an easement, I don't have any independent information about what's recorded and what's not. That is a North Carolina Department of Transportation road. It's, it's, I think your attorney will tell you, this is not something that's resolved or addressed in a zoning context, but I can't put words in his mouth.
Mr. Tarrell is correct, yes.
Thank you, I just want a clarity on that as well.
Hi, I'm David Couch, the property owner, and I'd just like to say, um, that Mr. Bennett and I have spoken. Whether there's an easement or whether there isn't an easement, uh, I trust him that, uh, and I'm having that reviewed right now, but we have zero intention to cut his access off. And whatever we do there to improve Banning Road would make, would take their needs into consideration and provide access there, uh, and improve that access, it's a dirt road or whatever else, and so when we improve it, we have zero intention to cut his access off in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you, Mr. Couch, we appreciate that. Thank you. Any rebuttal in, in the opposition? We have time now, if anyone who is opposed to this would like to speak? You have five, up to five minutes? We have people online too, maybe Mr. Nash would like to say something else? Okay. Thank you. So, so any other questions from the commissioners before I close the public hearing? Okay. Without further objection, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments or thoughts to be shared by the commissioners before we make our motions?
I want to say thank you to the applicant. This is an incredible project being brought forward. Lots of thought, lots of energy. And to be able to do it and preserve as much open space, which is what Summerfield is, wants to try to keep. This plan does it. In addition, the time you spent educating everyone involved in this project, because it is complicated. And you went out of your way over what we've seen from other developers sometimes to make sure we understood the project. So if we're not asking a lot of questions, it's because you answered them all in, in previous sessions. And just, thank you.
I think another reason why we don't have a lot of questions or even comments in opposition is because of the excellent outreach job that your team did. And I think, you know, for a project of this magnitude and this complexity, in order to get this level of consensus is truly remarkable. And the result is that we've got a huge breakthrough for Greensboro. We've got a victory for housing. And we've got a massively overdue acknowledgement of extraordinary persistence and forethought by the talented team that you assembled, Mr. Couch, as a visionary thought leader. And so I, I share Commissioner Skeens' thanks for bringing this and for persisting on it.
Anyone else?
Yes. I'd like to add something as well. This is, is indeed a robust project over a 30-year period. But I believe in about 15 years, even a decade from now, we would look at this and say, that was a solid decision. I'm also reflecting on the fact of the presentation and the graphics. Yes, they are just schematics and they're just ideas. But it makes a big deal when one takes the time to look at what the future can be like. And I'm thinking about this as well. This is setting a national precedent. I did some research. This is setting a national precedent for what a village of the future can look like. But also look at other cities such as Austin and other areas that have done similar concepts. It revolves around making the city look great, but also drives economic development. And it makes for beautiful homes. You already have beautiful homes in the area and beautiful property. And I believe this is going to enhance that. And it's going to drive economic mobility and other enhancements. So this is indeed going to be a village of the future. And it was a pleasure to see the presentation and all those great things. So we're looking forward to the future.
I also, I agree with Mr. Downing and the other comments Mr. Nichols made. For me, it's an interesting comparison that we recently were dealing with some adjustments to Reddy Fork, which, when it was proposed, was a 30-year plan. And here we are 25 years later. So I'm especially impressed that they're talking about reevaluating the transportation and making adjustment analysis as we move along into this 30-year plan. The forethought and the vision for this village and the concepts that are presented to us are just outstanding. And I'm very excited to see this unfold. So thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that this is not about disfiguring, disfiguring the existing land. You know, with each of these villages, as they will come about, we will be seeing creativity that Greensboro has never seen before in, in the development process. The fact that 330 acres of the 912 remain as green space, open space, is just amazing. And that the concept takes the houses, they'll be rotated to face green trails, will be, we've heard about a green network. I don't think we've ever heard about a green network before. The, the way that you've used old ideas, like row houses and cottage courts and so forth, and are making them new again, is remarkable. And I love the fact, you know, I mean, we just came out of 2020 when we had never heard the name COVID. And we had never heard about Zoom. And we never worked at home. I can't even imagine what it's going to be like in another 10 years or 20 years. What the things will be, automatic buses? I have no idea. The transportation trends will change. But the way that you are, have created this is just such, you know, something that people from all over the country, I think, and besides all us, people from Greensboro will be enjoying. So thank you so much.
Erica Glass. I was very impressed with the presentation as well. But I'm always impressed with the presentations if someone has the forethought to sit down and think about how they'd like to present this information. It's great to see in this part of the city that this type of development and creativity has come forward. However, it certainly would be interesting to, it would be nice to see this type of development and a forethought creativity for other parts of the city. I live in southeastern Greensboro. This is not my soapbox, but I am going to say this. I live in southeastern Greensboro. And it certainly, absolutely would be welcome in my side of the town to see something as beautiful as it has been presented to this commission.
Mr. Madam Chair. I've been around for a while and I live in northeast Greensboro. And I agree with you. I would like to see some development like this. Great presentation. Thank you for your job that you did. You impressed us and I hope the neighborhood will be very satisfied in the end. I will be supportive. Thank you.
Okay. So in order to do this, we will close the public hearing without further objection. And we will be needing a five annexation request, an original zoning, and then the UDP. Yes. So let me, let me see what ... Yes, you're going to, right. We want to hear more from Mr. Carter and as to, are there images for us to read and so forth? Thank you.
Do you see the map on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. So first off would be the annexation request. This is the recommendation for P L P dash 25 dash 31.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to do the first annexation here, okay? And read this and then we'll vote on it and then members will continue, okay? Thanks so much. P L P 25 dash 31, 6846 Banning Road, 5411 and 5411 C Z Z Centerfield Road, 5790 Meadow Pond Court, 6784 Meadow View Drive, 3634 Oak Ridge Road, 3136, 3144, 3148, 3200, 3203, 3204, 3209, 3215, 3219, 3221, and 3239 Pleasant Ridge Road, 7119 Rabbit Hollow Road, 6925 Z Z, 6955 Z Z, and 7036 Summerfield Road, 7211 and 7217 Z Z Wyatt Drive, and a portion of the road R-O-W. Right-of-way annexation request.
Commissioner Nichols, I second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. And now we will vote. We will take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. And the next one, with somebody else.
Commissioner Peterson, item P L P 25 dash 32, 6935 Somerville Road Annexation.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Downing. Now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting.
I move P L P 2533, 3220 Pleasant Ridge Road Annexation.
Commissioner Peterson, second.
Thank you, Mr. Connor and Mr. Peterson. We will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Ms. Nichols, I move annexation of P L P 25 dash 34, 3668, 3672, 3674, 3683, 3685, 3687, and 3727 Oak Ridge Road, 5920 and 5930 Khaki Place, 7630 DeBeau Road, all of Khaki Place right-of-way. And that's the subject of the annexation recommendation.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Peterson. We will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Madam Chair, this is Washey Downing. I move that we end at, well, P L P 25 dash 35, 7650 and 7652 DeBeau Road.
Ms. Nichols, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Nichols. Now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. Now we need a zoning request. Thank you.
Item Z 2508001. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that it's action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at, hold on. 6846 Banning Road, 5411 and 5411 Z Z Centerfield Road, 5790 Meadow Pond Court, 6784 Meadow View Drive, 3668, 3672, 3674, 3683, 3685, 3687, 3727 and 3634 Oak Ridge Road, 3136, 3144, 3148, 3200, 3203, 3204, 3209, 3215, 3219, 3220, 3221 and 3239 Pleasant Ridge Road, 7119 Rabbit Hollow Road, 6925 Z Z, 6935, 6955 Z Z, and 7036 Summerfield Road, 7631, 7650, 7652 DeBeau Road, 7211 and 7217 Z Z Wyatt Drive, 5920 and 5930 Khaki Place, all of Khaki Place right-of-way, all of Banning Road right-of-way, a portion of Brookbank right-of-way, a portion of Four Cedars Drive right-of-way, portions of Pleasant Ridge Road right-of-way, portions of Oak Ridge Road right-of-way, and portions of Interstate 73 right-of-way from County A G Agricultural, County R S 3 Residential Single Family, County R S 20 Residential Single Family, County R S 30 Residential Single Family, County R S 40 Residential Single Family, County C Z L O Conditional Zoning Limited Office, and C Z G B General, Conditional Zoning General Business, to City P U D Planned Unit Development. With the adopted Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed City P U D zoning district is conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area, and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. And the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilver, second.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. And it's a toss-up between, I'm going to go with Mr. Gilver. Okay. Okay. I kind of heard yours before. Okay. With that said, we are going to take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes nine to zero. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. And now we need a UDP.
This is Sandra O'Connor. I move approval of the unified development plan.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor and Mr. Downing. Was it Downing? Okay. Thank you. So now we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes nine to zero. This, this approval constitutes a final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Welcome partially to Greensboro. With that said, I think we have one more part to our agenda.
Yes.
The South Greensboro Plan.
Yes.
Is the commission okay about going forward? Is it okay?
Sure.
Everybody okay? Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Well, just because Luke and somebody else went down there and got it turned off. I know. I can't believe they got it done. Those guys were out there working for the whole time, all evening, nothing. And then it ...
Okay. We're going to start. Okay. Thank you.
Mike told me to charge a hedge right now.
Okay. Would you please state your name and address?
Yes. Russ Kleg. I work in the, I'm a manager of Long Range Planning Division in the Planning Department. And this evening, I am here to give you all an overview of the South Greensboro plans, which we've been working on for a little over a year now. This is a study area that's pretty large. It's about eight square miles between highways 220 and 421 on east and west, and then I-40 and I-85. It includes a wide range of land uses. You've got very established neighborhoods. You've got some multifamily. You've got some older industrial, newer industrial highway business, a major commercial corridor and rental road. Really covers everything you would have in a small city. So we've been addressing a lot of issues in the area. This plan will be used for community members, business owners, anybody advocating for the area, for area neighborhoods, city staff, we use that when we're looking at our C I P budgeting, when we're looking at different plans and prioritizing those. And also for decision makers, we all are looking at land use decisions and zoning changes. We've had quite a bit of community engagement in such a large area. It's always a challenge to figure out how to best get community engagement. And in this process, we've divided things into a series of workshops that focused on different topics. And as a process ... And as the process went on, we sort of built the recommendations together and brought out the previous set of recommendations to get those viewed and reviewed. We've also had an advisory committee that's met several times and helped us along with meeting materials and to refine items and ideas. We had a group of focus group interviews back before the, before the holidays last year that went in-depth on a few different items, whether it's economy or arts, different range of topics. We do weekly office hours. We've had a lot of different meetings with different departments. People really give us great ideas from transportation and parks and rec, stormwater, on different things we can do to help improve the area, different strategies and recommendations. So big picture, this plan really strikes a balance between the big picture vision that will have a long range and a lot of different options to choose from, and shorter-term implementation steps. We want this to be an action-oriented plan as well as paint that big picture vision. We see a lot of different opportunities for investment in the area. If you look at Randomman Road, if you look at some of the other vacant land out there, there's a lot of great opportunities for investment. Certainly with Toyota and other economic development news we've had, we see that as being a big plus. We need to work on how people get around. There's a road network, but we need better bike facilities, we need better trail facilities, we need to connect the neighborhoods to these resources better. And in some instances, there's some quality of life issues that come from some of the older obsolete hotels and businesses, the highways, the impact those have on some of the neighborhoods. So I'll just kind of briefly touch on some of the things we're seeing in the different sections of the plan. As I mentioned, we're talking broad goals, broad vision, but also fine tuning and understanding where we want to go first, because there's a lot to pick from. So prioritizing and understanding where we're headed in the next five years or so will be very important. We looked a lot at the environment and the parks, the open space. There's some various park-specific analysis and improvements we can look at, but we're also seeing the better use of the Creete Network and how we can tie trails together with parks and lessen the impact of highways and some other negatives there. I mentioned transportation options. We see a lot of, with the crossmax, some better opportunities on Randomman Road to bring in more business and really help that area grow. And again, with the greenway and bicycle connections that connect the neighborhoods to those. We see a lot of local businesses in the area. We've had good local restaurants at our meetings. We see a lot of things to celebrate. There's a really rich community and a lot of vibrancy in the area. In addition to improving the area's image, there's a lot of opportunities for more art and more sort of public art planning in that part of town. Housing and economy, there's some great opportunities to add different types of housing. We see a lot of single-family neighborhoods. We see a lot of apartments like we do with the rest of Greensboro, but there's some great places where we can add missing middle. We can add some new housing on Randomman Road. We can do a lot of things that, we know we got people moving to Greensboro, but how do we add them in so that they add benefit to the surrounding neighborhoods? We also see a lot of employment areas that are really strong. I was thinking some of the legacy industrial might be places that could turn over in the near future, but actually we see a lot of really high lease rates there, and they're continuing to add vitality. So it's a question of how do we make sure that that is benefiting the neighborhoods? And then this comes together in a couple of chapters at the end where we have a lot of concept plans and illustrative drawings that really show how these items can play out in the different areas. There's a really different plan that we've done previously. It's very visual elements. It's a big plan, it's like two hundred and fifty some pages, but a lot of that's because there are a lot of these visual elements that show how we can tie these networks together and how they can be developed on the ground. So as you can see, this picture of looking at a park, you know, some of the detailed ideas we can do to improve those. Parks and Rec and transportation has been very involved here. So next steps, we will, we just had a meeting this past Saturday, so we're continuing to add that input to our plan. We will be sending those updated sections out to the departments for them to review. We'll have more information up online for people to look at. We're updating it now with the new information that we have. We've got some short-term projects we're working on now. We have a grant to do a crosswalk project on Elmsley Drive there at the Walmart. Transportation's working on some improvements on Van Dellea Road. We've really been focusing on some Randomman Road projects since that plan got adopted last year, so continuing those improvements. Hopefully, we'll be back here in September, maybe October, for a public hearing and more details. But we will make sure we send a plan out to you all to look at and review well ahead of that, because it's a lot to dive into and look at. So I went through that way too fast. I was planning for this to be late at night, so I was ready to go quickly. So I'd love to answer any questions y'all have.
I have two questions.
Yes.
First, did any member of the commission go to one of these planning meetings? Was that, was that a no, no one, no one? Okay. None of us, okay. Could, would it be possible to, you know, reach out to us and figure out a time where we could see this public presentation? You know, the public has seen it, but we haven't, and it would be really helpful, I think.
Sure.
If we're gonna vote on it, at least to see it. I'd be interested in seeing it, you know? Yeah, but this is the new, the new one, and get our input, because I think it would be valuable input from the commission, I would think, as well.
We would be, certainly will share the, if you go through this website, SG Plans, the shortcut to the website, there's a good bit of information there. We'll keep updating that, as I said, with the boards from the meetings, that kind of thing, and then we'll have the draft plan available. But we can also meet with anybody. Y'all want to do small groups or meet individually, we can walk through all the different pieces of the plan. We certainly would be willing to do that.
Are you, are you planning any particular public dates right now that will happen?
In terms, well, the main meetings we've wrapped up, we had a series of five meetings in the area, as well as some of the focus groups and things of that nature. So we probably won't go back out to the public with a big meeting. But again, we'd be happy to talk with you all. We will be going back out to neighborhood associations and things like that, in smaller groups, kind of meeting people where they are, but that probably won't be a big, like, public meeting.
But you, but you, you might do neighborhood meetings?
Yes, we've been going to smaller neighborhood meetings, and like I say, we can.
Yeah, we would, we would really like to know the dates of those neighborhood meetings so that we could possibly attend if we.
They're already over.
Oh, there's no, no more? No more?
Well, we'll be going, we won't be hosting a meeting where we send out invitations and invite people, but we'll be going to their meetings.
So their meetings?
Correct, right.
Yeah, so that, I think that would be our only opportunity. So if you could send that to, okay.
Yeah, I'll work with Mike and Luke to get y'all information about where we are and where we're meeting and.
Yeah, and the next time you're doing a plan like this, if you're doing a northern Greensboro plan, please let us know ahead of time. As commissioners, we could attend, because I didn't know any of these dates, and I'm sure there's interest here. Am I speaking well for everyone? Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, that would be.
We'll make sure we keep y'all in the loop. I think it's always a challenge, you know, y'all have busy agendas, it's hard to get here and keep y'all updated. But we'll make sure you know about the meetings that we have going forward.
Yeah, because looking at two hundred and fifty pages and not really understanding it is hard without a little dialogue. You know, what you, what you just spoke was great and very helpful, so thank you.
We'll do it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the?
Yes, I have a question. Could you give another example of converting the retail of Bennett buildings into housing, or what type of housing, for example?
Well, we have been really studying, especially with the Randomman Road plan, where we can look at, because most places, not just Greensboro, but a lot of places are kind of over-retail. We've seen, you know, particularly if you see newer things being built, the older retail kind of falls on hard times, and it's hard to get new retail in. So we're starting to see more mixed-use development, we're starting to see more residential where retail used to be. We've been looking for a lot of examples, but there's some good ones in Austin, there's some good ones that have been more locally in Charlotte area. You know, we do allow, for instance, commercial, in commercial medium, we do allow residential now. So we're trying to encourage more residential to happen. Helps to start to create that more walkable environment that can take advantage of transit, can bring more vitality and people to the area without impacting the existing neighborhood. So that's, in some spaces, the lots are a little shallow on the road, so it gets to be challenging to put all that in there, but it's something we're focused on doing that we have seen in some other, other cities. Thank you.
What's the relationship between the planning effort that you've been spearheading and other big long-term plans like G S O twenty forty? How does that work get incorporated into future long-term planning efforts on a broader scale?
Sure, thank you. So we, anytime we've done a small area plan since the adoption of G S O twenty forty, and that would be Eastgate City, or the Fleming Road Plan, or the Randomman Road Plan, we couch those recommendations, which come from the community and analysis of the community. But we couch those in the big ideas and the goals and strategies of G S O twenty forty. So there's a good link between those plans. Also, when we're working on these plans, we talk to the relevant departments, if it's Parks and Rec or Transportation, to look at their plans, their overarching plans, and relate their goals and strategies back to those as well. So we try to make sure all those smaller pieces are tied back into the bigger goals and visions that we have as a community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really great. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're closing this meeting now, and.
We haven't asked how many cases next month.
And wait, 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 wait.
We were prepared.
And I just want to say thank you to the staff, really. Thank you, thank you very much. We can't thank you enough. That was just terrific. And I just want to thank the commissioners, you know? Really good job. Okay, so.
And then the last question was how many cases next month? Right, only six right now.
Oh, wow, great. That's exciting. Actually, no, it's not. We shouldn't be excited about only six cases. Is there food in a room somewhere, or if you got a coke or whatever? Give a sandwich and go home. Give a sandwich and go home. Thank you so much.